Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 2nd, 2022. Lots of twos in the date tonight. February 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First, a quick announcement that Sharon Cantrell will be participating fully tonight as not all of the regular commissioners are present. Thanks, Sharon, for being here. And that takes us to our first agenda item, which is the approval of minutes from January 19th, 2022. Are there any questions for staff on those? All right, seeing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2022, as written to the record.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell.
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. All right, next is our consent agenda, and we have one item on that tonight for AFP-9173-2022, Amendment to Comprehensive Sign Package for Rio, and Approval of Project Feature Sign, Design and Location in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This is an amendment to final site plan. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda item? No? Okay. Then with that, I think we're ready for motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
All right, we've got, we've got, we've got two or three seconds, so be able to take, pick and choose. So it's moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Mr. Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And that takes us now to our one site plan for the evening, and that's for AFP-9107-2021, Construction of a new 15,725 square foot dealership building, 19,589 square foot expansion of the existing service center, and site improvements for the King Auto Dealership at 953 North Frederick Avenue of the C2 General Commercial Zone. And this is an amendment to final site plan. And presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. Tech team, can I have packet page number 126, please? So, good evening. So staff before you to present Amendment to Final Site Plan Application AFP-9107-2021. The applicant is requesting approval for a new 15,725 square foot dealership building, 19,589 square foot expansion of the existing service center and associated site improvements. As part of this application, the applicant is also requesting six parking waivers from the city code. An associated amendment to forest conservation plan was also submitted. Pursuant to Chapter 22 of the city code, the planning commission must review and approve forest conservation plans. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-172A, which requires the planning commission to grant amendments to approval, to approve site plans. So the subject property is located at 953 North Frederick Avenue, which is the King Auto Dealership. And I will have Jason Oshinbach, who's going to start the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Jason, this is Sean Hughes. Do you want to go first?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Jason. Sean Hughes from Miller, Miller &amp; Camby, here tonight for Jody Klein. And I just wanted to briefly introduce the team, and then we'll get to Jason and Ken Jones, who'll be our speaker. Jason's here, obviously. Jason Oshinbach for the applicant. Mr. Ken Jones is here for MHG Engineering. Also, Tom Flanagan, the architect for the project from his company. Dave Post also from MHG. And then we have some additional members who are on standby for support if need be. That includes Nick Dribbin from Lenhart Traffic Company. And Larry and Ryan Oshinback, I think, are also with Jason tonight. So before I hand it off to Jason, let me just, first of all, thank you to city staff for their time and guidance on this matter. You know, they've been great as usual, especially Ms. Forbes, who wrote the staff report. And also want to thank Chris Norris and the team for the technology support on this, which is still challenging for many of us, but he makes it pretty easy. As, thank you, Jasmine, for introduction about the project. So I won't go into a quick introduction. It is correct. We're here asking for approval for the amendment to the site plan. Staff has recommended approval of the application. We appreciate that. We support that, including the condition. So with that, I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Jason, and then he'll be followed by Ken, who's going to kind of go over the presentation for the project. And certainly, we welcome any questions at the end or anytime during the presentation. So thank you very much. Jason, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I also just want to thank everybody for their time to help us get here this evening. So the purpose of this meeting is to present our plan to relocate our King GMC Buick dealership that's currently located off 35 and Chatty Grove Road to the north, where Watkins Mill and North Frederick Avenue interchange. And the, the property that is, the GMC store is on now, has been sold, and that is except for closing on the 31st. And our hope is to present a plan this evening to get that moved and completed within that timeline. So with that, I'll move on to Ken and let him present the engineering aspects of the project.
Good evening. For the record, Ken Jones with MHG, civil engineer for the project. If we could go to the next slide. This is the architect's rendering of the proposed GMC showroom. So we'll get into more architectural details about that later. This just sort of gives you an overview of what the new building would look like. Next slide, please. As Jasmine mentioned, the site address is 953 North Frederick Avenue in Gaithersburg, obviously. It's located at the intersection of 355 and Watkins Mill Road. Adjacent to the property, you've got additional car dealerships to the south. There's apartments as well as townhomes to the north on the opposite side of Watkins Mill Road. And then there's a hotel to the southwest on the opposite side of 355, with an office park to the northeast, opposite, on the opposite side of Russell Avenue. It is a 8.47 acre existing parcel B. Next slide, please. This is another aerial, but it's a, it's a perspective aerial. The, the large grass space there that is just below the two existing showroom buildings is where the new showroom would be proposed. And then you can see behind that, with the bay doors, is an existing service area, which is going to be expanded. So that's the primary area where the new buildings are proposed. The other thing I want to point out on this slide is the grade differential between the front of the existing showroom buildings there. And then if you can see, the service lanes behind that are lower. So essentially, what you have at this, at this, in this area is sort of a walkout condition, where the front floor of the building is an elevation higher than what the rear elevation of the building would be. Next slide, please. As has been mentioned already, this is a site plan amendment. Shown here is the previous iteration of the site plan. This is AFP-03044, which was approved by the city back in 2004. The property is a C2 zone, still a C2 zone. And with this plan, there was 94,774 total gross floor area was proposed. And this effectively is, is our existing conditions out there today, which we would be developing upon. This plan shows, as I already mentioned on the aerials, you've got the existing showroom buildings, with currently a Kia showroom to the south and a Volkswagen showroom to the north. There's also some service areas associated with that, and, and obviously, a lot of parking area. This being a car dealership, as well as a service, there's, there's a mix of customer parking, employee parking, and then, of course, parking for, for vehicles for display for sale or otherwise vehicle storage. As far as the existing topography, we've generally got a slope that goes from, that begins on the high side over at 355. And then as you move to the east, it drops going down towards Russell Avenue on the, and on the east side. This is a developed property. It has an existing storm drainage system that picks up runoff from, from the property. If you can see in the back there, towards Russell, there's a box, which that is an underground sand filter and underground stormwater management treatment facility, which was, you know, constructed with the previous development that provides exist management of the existing runoff from the site. Next slide, please. This is our proposed site plan, which I've also thrown some colors on to just identify a few areas. So as shown in blue, would be the proposed building additions in the front, and in what is currently the grass area that I mentioned earlier, is the new GMC showroom building. That's going to be two levels. And then you can see it's sort of connected to the existing service building in the back. That's an overhead connection. And then the expansion of that service area that I mentioned there is the L-shaped blue area behind the, behind the new showroom building. The total gross floor area of, of the building additions is 35,314 square feet, which brings the total GFA for the site up to 130,088 square feet. This results in a floor area ratio of 0.36, which is well below the 1.5 FAR allowed by the C2 zone. All setback requirements are either met or exceeded. And the proposed building height is well below the 10-story maximum allowed by the C2 zone. In addition to the buildings itself, there's a vehicle display plaza that is proposed in front of the new building. And yeah, wanted to mention early, as I mentioned earlier, we have sort of walkout condition with the, with the new showroom. What is the first floor elevation if you were to come in the main entrance to the new showroom building? To the side of that, can we zoom in to the, to the new building, the showroom? Is that possible? I'm not driving. No, by the way, it's not. Oh, there's a, okay. If you could pan down to the left, please. Yeah, there we go. So you can see on the southern edge of the new building, there's a vehicle entrance there. So that's a story below the, for first floor entrance. You can see there's a 335 elevation at the, at the first, at the main entrance there, and a 19 elevation of the vehicle entrance. And so that is a 14 and a half foot vertical differential between the first floor and the service area coming around the side of the building. And so if we could pan a little bit further to the left, what that means is that we've got some grade change that needs to be accommodated as you move from the front of the building around to the side of the building, and then to the back, which is also at that same elevation. Our architect will touch on what's going on inside the building, but I don't care about that because I'm a civil engineer. I care about what's going on outside. So, so in order to get down there, as you can see, we've got a number of contours that you sort of catch the, the side of the building as you go around to the side, up to the front. There's also retaining wall there to accomplish that. But this results in an 8% slope through that space, which, which touches on one of our parking waivers that I'll get to later. But that's the main reason for, for that grading, and for the slopes and the retaining wall, is to accommodate these, these, these two entrances to the building. There is also a small retaining wall to the south. If you could pan down to the bottom a little bit further. Again, that's, that's, it's, it's very minor. It's two to three feet in height, but there's a small retaining wall there just off the southern property line that is also being brought about by some of these adjustments to the grade to get down to these building entrances. If we could zoom back out, please. I mentioned earlier, this is obviously an automotive dealership, so there's a mix of, of parking. There we go. That's good. Stop there. So there's a mix of parking. You've got customer parking spaces, which I've identified in this plan on red. They're in the front, obviously. We want customers to be able to come into the main entrance and be able to come into the showroom buildings in the front. So the red spaces are, we've designated as customer parking. The pink spaces in the rear, we've designated as employee parking. And then the rest, which, which are not colored, those are all parking spaces intended for, for vehicles for display or, or vehicle storage, which is obviously the bulk of the parking. And again, the parking waivers that are associated with this project, there are no, none of those parking waivers are associated with either the customer or the employee spaces. They're really all the inventory storage spaces, which of course would be, would be used by employees of, of the business and, and not, not the public at large. Based upon the city zoning ordinance for the, for, for this use, 349 parking spaces would be required. So we're, we're providing more parking than that. There are 617 total parking spaces proposed. That figure includes 54 customer spaces, 41 employee spaces, and then 522 vehicle storage spaces. There's also going to be an electric vehicle charging station built with the project. There are two electric vehicle parking spaces designated in the front of the new building. Site access and circulation will remain largely unchanged. You've got the main site entrance there, drive entrance off of 355. That's going to stay right where it is, as are the vehicle entrances to the north off of Watkins Mill Road. We, working with staff, we did go ahead and add a pedestrian connection to the north, which you could pan up just a little bit, please. So there's existing sidewalks in front of the, the existing showrooms, and we've constructed a, an extension of that. You can see there's a crosswalk that extends towards the north, towards Watkins Mill Road. And then ADA compliant sidewalk to get you around and connects into the public sidewalk along Watkins Mill Road. We're constructing new water and sewer connections to serve the new buildings, which are shown on this plan. They're in the back of the, the service building addition. They are connecting into the existing water and service that's on the property today. So there won't be any connections into the right of way. It would just be connecting into those onsite systems. The stormwater management facilities that are in the back of the private property that I mentioned earlier, those will remain in place with this development. New environmental site design practices are proposed to provide additional stormwater management treatments and to augment the existing stormwater management system. There are two micro bioretention planter boxes proposed, which are shown in green on this plan. There is a planter box that's just off the back of the proposed showroom, which will receive rooftop runoff from that new building. And another planter box further to the back, just next to those employee parking spaces, which will be fed with a trench drain that'll pick up runoff from the, from the existing pavement right there. And the stormwater management plan has been approved by, by TPW. So I mentioned this a couple of times. There are a couple of parking waivers associated with the project, which I will go through point by point in the same order that they are presented in the city staff report. Again, those parking waivers are really just associated with the inventory storage spaces. It is not, we don't, we're not requesting any waivers for the employee or customer parking spaces. Next slide, please. So parking waiver number one is for providing more than the minimum number of parking spaces required. I mentioned this total previously. The additional parking spaces are needed for additional vehicle storage. Now, waiver number two is for drive aisle widths, which are less than 26 feet per Section 24-218E1 of the code. On this plan, I've marked up the drive aisles, which would be less than 26 feet in blue. So there's five in the back, which that entire rear lot is, is for, for the most part, for all, for vehicle storage spaces. So it's the, the drive aisles that are associated with those spaces. You still have, there's a perimeter drive aisle there that is in fact 26 feet wide, but it's just that intermediate drive aisles are less than 26 feet. That'll just be operated by employees of the business only. As we're moving to the left on this plan, there's a drive aisle that exists today. It's less than 26 feet. I believe it's 22 feet between those parking bays behind the existing Kia building and the building itself. And then there's two drive aisles up in the upper left-hand corner of this plan, which are again adjacent to vehicle display spaces that are less than 26 feet. Waiver number three is for parking spaces that are less than eight and a half feet in width. There are a total of 260 parking spaces on site that are only eight feet wide, which are identified in yellow on this plan. As you can see, those are all isolated towards the rear lot, which is intended for vehicle storage. Waiver number five, no, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. Waiver number four is to remove the requirements for motorcycle parking and to reduce the number of bicycle, bicycle parking spaces per Section 24-215-5. The site is operated for an automotive dealership for many, many years. And the operators have not seen the need for motorcycle parking. It has not been demonstrated. But obviously, we do have standard parking spaces, which if someone arrives on site in a motorcycle and he's parked, they could certainly use the standard parking spaces, which we're providing in excess of the city's requirements. The calculation for bicycle parking spaces required is a function of the total number of parking spaces required for the property. So as I've touched on already, this figure includes a significant number of vehicle storage spaces. And so we are proposing to provide bike parking spaces based on the total number of customer and employee parking spaces provided, which results in four bike parking spaces, which we're providing with new bike racks near the existing VW dealership entrance. Parking waiver number five is for parking slopes that exceed 6% per Section 24-22A of the code. Again, this is that, that 8% slope area that's around the corner of the new showroom building. Those spaces are shown in green on this exhibit. The parking spaces that are adjacent to that 8% drive aisle through that area are also 8%. Again, these are also vehicle storage spaces. They would only be operated by employees of the business. Waiver number six is for the parking lot green area requirement, which is that 10% of the parking lot must be devoted to planting area or stormwater management per Section 24-22E of the city code. So the previous site plan approval for this project, there was a waiver of that requirement granted with that approval. At the time of that approval, the waiver, the requirement was less than 10%. The requirement was only 8%. But a waiver of that, that was not met by the previous development, and a waiver was granted by the city. And in that case, perimeter planting was accepted in lieu of green space that would be internal to the parking lot. So given the fact that we've obviously got an existing site here that's already been developed, and, and that parking lot was unable to meet the previous 8% requirement, it is not feasible for this site to meet the new 10% requirement. So we're requesting a waiver from that again, or I guess a continuation of that waiver. However, we did go ahead and add new green spaces, which our landscape architects will touch on a little bit later. But we were able to increase the number of green areas around the building and a couple of other isolated areas on site to try to, to increase that parking lot green area, bringing the total up to 4.56%. That's all I had. And with that, I will pass it off to the project landscape architect, Dave Post, with MHG.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I think you can go to the next sheet. And that shows our landscape plan. Oh, you noticed in the survey of the existing plant materials that we're missing a few street trees. So we're adding those back in to complete the street tree planting on Watkins Mill Road. And we're also indicating on here two new trees to replace, two that are being removed for the stormwater management requirements on the, on the property, ginkgo and a red maple. And this also shows some new planting along the planned southern border, where the new retaining wall is going in that area, and also around the new building. We have some planting in an island and in the stormwater management facilities there. We've also addressed the forest conservation. I don't know if we need to review that or not, but the original forest conservation plan is basically being brought back up by the replacement of these trees and the addition of the two trees that were being replaced. There was a previously approved forest conservation plan. And so the mitigation was provided with a, a fee and lieu payment back in 2003.
David, is any, any of the, I mean, looking at this plan, obviously, the, the new trees you're showing are along Watkins Mill. Do you have anything programmed for along Frederick Road?
There's no trees except for the two, I think there's two existing street trees along Frederick Road. The client feels it's very important to have visibility from the roadway, so we didn't propose anything new along there.
Okay. All right. What's next?
We pass it off to the architect, are we?
Yes.
Do they know that? Yep. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, great. If you could go, advance to the next slide, please. And that is your green space slide to the next slide, if you would, please. Great. If you'll re-center that one. Okay, this is the, the showroom you're seeing here. 355 is to your right-hand side on this plan. And what you're looking at is the upper level. You would come into the front showroom area. You see a reception desk as soon as you come in, and all the offices associated with sales of vehicles, along with the top of the page. You'll see some administrative offices and bathroom functions that they go with the main showroom level. As you go around the site, which would be up the page and come back in, go to the next slide, if you would, please. You're going to drive back in underneath the showroom area that you just saw. You'll see six cars there. That's a service reception lane. Those cars would drive into the building and then drive out of the building, have service written up. The customer would then go straight ahead down the page into a waiting area, cashiering functions, and also have access to the upper level by stair and by elevator to give access throughout the whole building. After a customer leaves, the other side of the lane, you'll see a service department expansion. And that light blue area is a portion of the existing building that will be used now for this GMC function, taken from Kia. And the service department that you see now will be the new GMC service department. There are stalls accessed by a center aisle, as well as from the exterior of the building on the top of the page. And then there were also five truck stalls. You'll see the larger stalls at the top left of the paper that are on access from the exterior of the building as well. Around to the back of the building, which is the left-hand side and the lower portion that is still not shaded, that is in addition to the Kia dealership to make up for the stalls that were removed in the expansion due to some manufacturer's requirements. And then the rest of the Kia service stays as is. We've got a small parts department in the, right in the middle of the building in the light blue section. And then there's some additional parts access through the parts department that are up above that level for parts wholesale and retail, mostly for the service vehicles in the service department. I'm following you, but I have to ask, if anybody else, I, I don't see a color. I just see grays. Is anybody else able to see the colors?
No, I just see gray.
Okay. It's not just me. All right. I'm assuming there's two grays then.
Thank you, because I thought I was crazy, so.
I took one for the team. I went out there for you. Yeah, no, Tom, we see light gray and dark gray and unshaded. Okay, so, so the lighter gray is the area that was part of the original building. And the darker gray is all part of the existing structures that are on site. And the open white-colored plans are part of the new, new addition. Great. New building. Okay, next slide, if you would, please. That is an elevation of the front of the building. We also had a rendering in the, in the very beginning. Lots of glass aluminum storefront, clear anodized aluminum with glass looking into the showroom. The metal panels are all ACM aluminum composite material, white along the top with a black band. The signage is all per the prototype manufacturer requirements for the entry feature. And you will see a display plaza to the right-hand side of the entry, which is elevated out of grade to keep it level with the finished floor, which would have some exterior display vehicles outside. As you drive around that right-hand side, you'll see, if you go to the next slide, you'll see the grade coming down from the left-hand, from 355 is to your left. You drive down and into your, one of those two entry doors, which are certified service for the service reception lane, and then that's the offices up above for the showroom facility. And there's a break in this drawing as we move to the right. If you go to the next slide, it's a continuation of that same. There you'll see five garage doors to the left, which are access to GMC car service. And then you also see five larger doors. Those are for GMC truck service. Those are the larger stalls that we saw. Those are working with the grade as we move down through the, through the property for the natural slope that's out there, as well as the height needed inside the building. If you go to the next slide, please. That is the That is the compressors and oil storage that is far, far beyond the right-hand side of the building. So it's all the way to the back of the building, up against the adjacent building, basically. Okay. Next slide, please. This one is the rear of the building, looking back towards three fifty-five from the back. The garage door that you see on the left is going into the proposed GMC service department. And the door that you see on the right is the addition into the Kia service department that's existing. We've advanced that to the back of the property as well. Okay, next slide. This one is cut off a little bit by the photo joke. Can you pan that a little bit to the left, please? That is the side of the showroom elevation that faces the existing Kia dealership. So the space between the two buildings, that is the side view of the left-hand side of the GMC showroom facility. Okay, and then it also has the lower building, it shows you that colored in gray there down below, and that is cut through the existing service department that's on the lower level. Next slide, please. And then this is the rear, this is like kind of in the accessway that's behind the showroom, looking back towards three fifty-five. And those are the Lucabond band you'll see on the top, as well as the windows into the back of the showroom offices. And then the exit, that garage door is the exit out of the service reception lane. And the other windows are for light into the waiting areas and public areas in the building. Next slide, please. And that is the existing, looking toward with your back to three fifty-five in that access driveway between the two, the service department and the showroom building, looking back into the garage door access to the GMC service department. You will hardly see that when you're on the site, because it's between the two buildings, between showroom and service. Next slide. Yeah, if you can go back then, great. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions at all?
Real quick on the, where the the display plaza is in front of the new building, can you do a quick reference back, probably back to the site plan? Where, where the transition is from the actual level with with the building floor to what essentially would probably be a sidewalk that then runs grade around to the side?
I think if you go back to exhibit five, sheet five, may show that the best.
I didn't realize that you showed that elevation, just how much of a grade change there was by the time you got to the end of the plaza.
Yes. Can we, can we go back on the photos, on the drawings to sheet five, please?
Oh, do you know which packet page it is? That's the numbers they're going to refer to.
I think it's sheet five that I'm referring to.
One thirty-eight.
Okay.
That starts the front elevation.
Okay.
The display plaza, we have tried to keep pretty level with where you get on at the sidewalk on the left-hand side of the building.
No, I know, but but show that in the site plan, where that, where the edge of the plaza is relative to where the remaining sidewalk that follows the grade is. That's what I missed the first time, I think, on the, on the presentation.
I think packet page one thirty-two should show what you're looking for.
Thank you. Okay, if you could zoom in on the display plaza a little bit.
It's sort of the bottom left of this plan.
Okay. There we go, that's great, thank you.
All right, so there's a, there's a retaining wall that encircles the display plaza, which, which begins right, sort of opposite of the main entrance there. And then, you know, as you continue to move south from this plan, it gets higher and higher. So with the last parking space there in that Bay of Twelve that's in front of the building, the wall would be five feet height, five, excuse me, five foot high at that point. And then it increases the height further as you move around to the south side of the building.
Okay, so if you parked there, you're, you're right into the wall. There's no sidewalk, there's no separation, there's no curb to pull the, pull the car back from that wall, you're right into the wall at that point.
You'd be facing the wall, those are vehicle display and storage spaces. Those, those aren't our customer parking spaces, but, but yes, you would, you'd be looking at a five-foot-high wall in that last parking space there.
Our intent is to have the customer park in the top of the page and come in level with the display plaza. Those would be, those would be display vehicles down along the front of the wall.
Okay.
So i- if I'm mobility challenged and I show up at site to look for a car and I park in a handicap parking space, how do I get around the lot to look at cars without, you know, going out of control down the hill?
We have an elevator in the building as well that that would be able to, I mean, you out on the lot, you would go straight out where the handicap stalls are and have access to everything on the front parking lot. And if by chance you needed to go to anything in the rear of the lot, you would, there's an elevator in the showroom building that drops down to the lower level with access out completely handicap accessible.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
My question is, I'm a little confused, which is nothing new, but I'm confused here because I'm trying to figure out, you've currently got Volkswagen and a Kia showroom. I don't see them anywhere in this new drawing anywhere. Are you going to maintain the Kia and Volkswagen showrooms, or are they going to be demolished and replaced by the new building?
Those remain in their entirety. If you go back to that same site plan drawing, if you would, please. The outline of those two buildings are, although they're very light on this drawing, but they are both adjacent buildings are located on the same drawing that we're looking at now. Maybe you could zoom in on that possibly?
And it did come through kind of light on this presentation for some reason.
Yeah, I can.
Maybe if you jump back to the aerial, which is, I think, three or four slides previous to this. Right there, there you go. So those are the existing showroom buildings, and those will, will remain.
So that is Volkswagen to the north to the top kind of left angle, and then Kia in the center, with the distance between, kind of similar, that would be where the the new GMC showroom would go.
Okay, so they
cross island there to the south.
Okay, my question is, is there going to be any continuity between the new building and the existing buildings in terms of signage or in terms of integration?
Yes, the finished floor height in the showrooms kind of align, and then the massing and the height of the fascias are somewhat aligned as well, so that the scale of the building is very, very consistent with the other two that are on site.
The sidewalk in front of the buildings, there's, there's sidewalk and, you know, pedestrian entries and so forth in the front of the the Kia and Volkswagen showrooms, which will connect to the sidewalk and the main entrance in front of the new GMC showroom as well.
And all three will be exposed on three fifty-five, that will be the main entrance.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
What I think, I think what you're heading to, if you, I have Google Earth up here just to remind myself what they even look like. I meant to drive out there today to check something and I didn't, but I'll get to it in a minute. They're still going to appear like three separate buildings, even though they sort of have an intertwined lower level service bays and of course shared parking, but from the front, there's sort of three small-scale brand presences, you know?
Right.
That's exactly right.
That's exactly right. And, and you know, it's, it's the, you, we can't even see because of the drop of the property if you're on three fifty-five, looking at the buildings, you can't. It's, they don't really have a sense of how the back of the building is from there.
But if you're, if you're part of the staff or you're part of the service team there, you're likely to find your way between all three through, through the, the lower level connectivity, one way or another, probably, I guess.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
And the only cut through in terms of getting off of three fifty-five, the entranceway will remain the same with no other additions or no other changes to that entrance.
That's correct as well.
And likewise on Watkins Mill Road.
Correct as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sharon, please, and you're on mute, by the way, before you start talking.
Thank you. I noticed that it said two, two new lights in the front. If you could go back to the, the previous site plan, could you tell us about the lighting package? The new lighting package?
Yep, Ken, you want to take that? Do you want me to take it?
You can.
Okay, let's see what two new lights you're showing first. Let's go back to that site plan if we can.
I think it was on Frederick Road, I think it was in the front, as I recall.
Okay. I think you can see I'm in packet page one seventy-four.
Yeah.
And that's also a little better site plan, so it outlines the buildings, the existing buildings a little better as well.
Okay, could you, could you zoom in some on the, Ken, is that the one that you want for your site lighting? Or do you have the other one that had the existing site lights on it?
We did prepare a lighting plan, but we did not include that in the presentation.
Okay.
Tried to anticipate questions as best I could.
Before you jump around, Sharon, what was your question, so they can go to the plan that best shows?
Just, just when we were talking about illumination, or we were, I was contemplating it earlier. I just wanted to know how that will change on the site now. Is it going to be, will there be more illumination from Frederick Road? Or will there be more on Watkins Mill Road? How is, how is that going to, how is that going to work for the new, for the new building? I know, I mean, in the old buildings will be the same. So I guess it's really, the question is, what's going to happen on Frederick Road?
There's existing light poles along Frederick Road, which, which will remain. There's, there's no changes proposed to the light poles that I guess, you know, are just off the parking lot along Frederick Road. There are two new light poles proposed in front of the new building, which you, you noticed on that plane view. And then there's a number of building lights proposed around the new building, and then the addition to the service area in the rear.
So for, for safety reasons, there's enough illumination that people can walk around in the evening?
Yes. Yeah, this is, we prepared a photometric plan and looked at light levels around the property. And, you know, it's, as you saw from the aerials, this is very much a developed site that has an existing parking lot. So for the most part, all of the lights around the perimeter are going to remain the same, but we are lighting the, the new building that's, that's interior to that.
Wall mounted, we have wall-mounted fixtures on the perimeter of the new building.
Yep, yeah.
Down, down on the lower level mostly, not on the top.
And there are, there are already, I didn't go out there today either, John. But in terms of the parking, where they have all the cars, are there, are there fixtures there? Are there, how, how does that, is that the same?
That, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that remains unchanged. The lighting on the front part of the site is the existing fixtures that are already out there.
That's correct, yeah. This, this, there's existing lighting for the, for the parking lot that's there today. And except in the area of the new building, that's going to remain unchanged.
And what about the Russell Avenue site part? Is, is there lighting back where they, where the cars are stored?
Yes, there are lighting fixtures over there as well. There's a number of fixtures internal to that rear parking lot as, and around the perimeter as well, both along, along Watkins Mill, along Russell, and then along the private property boundary to the south, they'll face into the site.
And those are, those are existing, we're not, we're not all many, those are all existing fixtures.
Yeah, if you look on, on Google Earth, there's a good, good images of that, where there's a lot of tall pole, pole mounted lighting. So it's likely in pretty good shape. But follow that for just a second, Sharon, and I want to piggyback on is on the elevation of the new building, what's the lighting scheme for that? Because what we're seeing, I think, across the board and from other dealerships that have come into the city is much more reliance on lit elements on the building itself. So backlit, you know, large expanses of backlit panels, things that, things that make the whole front sort of a signage expression in a way.
Right. There, there is no illuminated panel other than the signage. If we go back to the front elevation, it just says GMC and King, that's the only illuminated panels whatsoever. Other than the glass where you're getting light through the windows, that's the only, that's the only place you're getting anything illuminated.
Okay, great. All right, Sharon, anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Danny, please.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. You've done a good job. I, I have a quick question. I'm, you know, waivers don't really, you know, bother me if, if we can really justify them. But I do have a question about the second waiver and the five drive aisles that go from twenty-six feet to sixteen feet. So I wonder how, what impact will that have on access and egress in that area? I need to understand that to get a little better comfort for that particular waiver. So can we have a little discussion about that, please?
Certainly. Can we go back to the, I'm sorry, what was that page of the packet?
Oh, it's the three.
If you could zoom into the rear parking lot, please. So Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but these, these parking spaces in the rear, this is, that was the right plan, and then just say that, and then just zoom into the rear parking lot, please, pan to the right. And yeah, there, yes. So yes, you're exactly correct, is all of those, those one, one, two, three, four, five, the blue parking drive aisles between the double rows of parking. So this isn't a situation where we've got two-direction parking at the drive aisle. The way that we expect this will be operated is that, you know, you've got two bays of parking there. It'll essentially, you'll come in one side, and so really, functionally, those will be one-direction drive aisles. And so you would bring a car through and either you would, you know, that it's both parking spaces are free, and you would park in the second one and then park another car behind it. And then when you wanted to move a car out, it would just hang right and then go down that drive aisle towards the east.
So you have arrows, you know, pu- pu- you know, pointing out the direction?
Hey, Ken. Ken, this is Sean Hughes for his question. I think just to clarify also, this is not for the public to park in.
Right, right, yeah, and that, because he said that, that, that makes sense now. But, but also will there be like arrows to say, okay, one-way only, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so, so exactly like Sean mentioned, this is, this is only, this is only, the only, we're going to be using this parking area are employees. And so, so we did not feel it was necessary to.
These are cars for sale, be, that will walk there, right?
This is really inventory.
Yep. Inventory, right, 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 okay. That, that, that kind of gives me a little greater comfort understanding that. And then, but it will be, and like, and also the direction is only, not, not in both directions, it's one direction. And there'll be like painted, painted arrows or something to indicate the direction.
We could certainly do that. I mean, we didn't include the painted arrows in this area. The, you know, in the operation of site, they would notify their employees that that's how this intent area is intended to be used. And it doesn't necessarily have to go one direction or the other. They could, they could all be out and they could all be in as long as everybody's on the same page. And I think the operator will, will, you know, provide their employees with, with that information.
But to, to follow up on Danny's point, you've got sixteen-foot drive aisles and seventeen-foot parking spaces, so presume, presumably, your, your vehicle is the width of the drive aisle. Have you guys done? I'm not worried at all about this from a public standpoint, but
Right.
I'm assuming you all have done the, the turning studies to make sure that you can get your GMC truck out of these parking spaces if everything's full.
Yes, I've looked at vehicle turning simulations to just to ensure that, because I, I wanted to make sure that we could, yeah, you could, you could make that.
I've owned a Suburban, so I know about maneuvering that, okay?
It's a, it's a ninety-degree turn there. And so, yeah, I, I checked that we could make sure we could get a vehicle to make that right turn without, you know, whacking the bumpers of the cars that are on the opposite side of that drive aisle, moving down that space.
But this is, this is all inventory parking, as you said, I think, this is not general public retail parking. So how it's managed, those cars get moved by staff, they get, you know, shift and shimmyed and they wiggle those things together, however they need to, to pack them in.
Yes.
Exactly right. Anybody who's ever owned a Suburban knows how to shimmy and wiggle, so. But I'm, I'm happy to hear that this is just inventory. That, that makes, that gives me a, a better comfort with that severe drop twenty-six. Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks, Danny. Any other questions?
Yep, I, I have a few more. And this one may be a question for staff as much as the applicant, and it has to do with stormwater and, you know, existing versus new versus modified and, you know, understanding that a large portion of the site is existing, is being left alone, but a large portion of it being modified. It, where does the existing, how does the existing site compare to current stormwater standards? I don't see a lot of onsite retention. It looks like everything is going to storm drains, going straight to storm, storm sewer. What is the threshold for bringing an existing site like this into compliance with current stormwater practices? I, I'm looking at it, my initial reaction is that this is, it is now and it, it will be in the future, a massive amount of impervious surface. And clearly the applicant has done some select things around the building, fire retention, which looks like it's largely taking roof drainage and a little bit of parking lot drainage. But, you know, there is a, there is still a massive amount here. So I, I'm just curious how we fare against current best practices.
Do you wanna take on that one, Jasmine?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna state, you know, uh, stormwater management staff has reviewed this and had approved it. And they found that they, this project has slightly exceeded kind of their stormwater requirements, you know, with the two fire retention areas is being added, but I can.
I, I guess my, my question, when they made that determination, are they looking at just the disturbed area of new work? Or did they relook at the entire site as if it was a new site plan?
I believe.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, go again.
I was gonna say, it's a function of the disturbed area. Uh, and so it, it's, you know, if you're developing, if you're, if you're redeveloping a hundred percent of your site, and that would be a hundred percent disturbance and you would, you have to apply new stormwater management requirements to all of your disturbed area. If you're only disturbing twenty percent of an existing site, then that determines your, your stormwater management requirement. Um, there are two existing recharge, that, when the site was previously developed, uh, you know, it, it met the stormwater requirements at that time, which E S D didn't exist yet. Um, and so the state's requirements for stormwater management were different at that time. But there are two recharge trenches, underground trenches that are connected to the storm drain system that fill with water that then infiltrates into the, the subgrade during rainstorm events. There's two very large recharge trenches that are onsite. Uh, and then below that is an underground sand filter. And so that also fills and retains water during rainstorm events and then filters it before discharging, uh, into the storm drain system, which then gets collected in, in the public system in Russell Avenue. Um, so again, all of that's gonna remain in place. And then proportional to the disturbed area of the redevelopment, we've introduced E S D practices, you know, uh, for, for current stormwater management requirements to retreat those, those areas of new disturbances where we are, you know, creating new impervious areas where, uh, for the most part are on top of the existing impervious surfaces, thereby resulting in an overall improvement to the drainage of the site. Uh, and then, and then managing any new imperviousness as well, which is quite minimal, given how developed the site already is.
Uh, how, how close to, are, are you right up against the line for your disturbed area to, to triggering additional requirements? Or, uh, the, the reason I'm asking is it gets, it gets into my next question, which is the green area. And, you know, what, what would it actually take to meet the ten percent? You know, does that, does that require, you know, disturbing additional area to, you know, create landscape, which then triggers stormwater? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how your, how close your equation is, is dialed in and whether, you know, whether there is flexibility to increase the green area.
Well, in terms of the stormwater management requirements, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. We can certainly look that up and get you with those figures. But, uh, Jasmine, I think you mentioned that, um, that, that we're actually providing more than our required, um, stormwater management volume for the site, uh, the environmental site design treatment volume. Uh, so no, I don't believe that we are right on the, the edge of the cliff, so to speak. Um, and as I mentioned before, in terms of the, the ten percent green area requirement, the, the way that the city previously approved this project was allowed for perimeter planting. And that, that, that ten percent requirement is specifically internal to the parking lots. You don't get credit for any landscaping that you have around the perimeter. Uh, for whatever reason, I wasn't there at the time, but that's how, what the city previously approved is they accepted perimeter landscaping in lieu of that, in lieu of that internal parking, uh, lot greens area requirement, which of course at that time was only eight percent. And now it's ten percent. And so to go back and to, um, to retroactively enforce the ten percent requirement on this development would be a significant, uh, and, and we believe unreasonable, uh, level of, of, of redevelopment. Because the city is now, you know, with, it would be assuming something different than they previously approved back in, back in two thousand and three. Uh, but to, to directly answer your question, a, a, a significant amount of, of pavement would need to be removed. We're talking about inventory storage. And the operator of this site is, is, is desperate for enough space on the property inward to, to, to function as a business and, and operate, uh, and have a successful business to be able to store sufficient vehicles on site. So that would be a, a very significant, uh, that issue for the, for the, for the property owner.
Fair enough, and to give, give staff some appropriate credit, the calc's for, um, for both those sides of the equation that you're talking about, whether it's green area or what, what the impervious or, or disturbed area would be to go toward, um, stormwater management improvements. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to assume this, the, the staff, internal team has done a really good job of, of crunching those numbers and, and understanding it from, from all, all directions on what, what was, what this proposal did to all of those different scenarios. And, and I'm confident they were, they were thorough in figuring that out.
Yeah. So that's fair enough, I think the, the thing I am, uh, I'm struggling with looking at the exhibit in the packet is, I, understanding you guys calculated the green area in the parking per sort of strict, strict standards, but it would be helpful, you know, understanding the previous, you know, accommodation that was made to take credit for perimeter planting. You know, how much perimeter planting exists, what is that area? Um, you know, cause we're looking at, we're looking at four and a half percent of green area within the, within the parking area. I, I get the, the logic, but if we're saying that, well, it should be okay cause previously we, we accounted, we were, everybody was willing to accept perimeter planting. There's no discussion here of how much perimeter planning we have, what's that area and what's our aggregate, you know, total green area.
Fair enough. It's, 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 um, it's shown, if we wanna go to that, it's on the previously approved site plan in the data table. I will point out that the previous plan was done by an issue, that information's there. Uh, it's about thirty thousand square feet, um, which, uh, it's, was twelve point five eight percent. So it was well beyond that eight percent. But that's, that's noted on the data table on the previously approved site plan, if you.
And we can move into discussion about whether that's appropriate or not, um, Phil, if you don't mind. So do you have more questions, uh, for the applicants team?
No, I think the only other question I had was related to accessible parking. The second piece of that was that you have all your employee parking at the back low side of the site. If, if you have employees that need accessible parking or is the intent that they will occupy the, the public, you know, front of house accessible parking, um, for the day that they're there or, or what's the?
Some, some of the display parking that's on that lower level would still be accessible by the elevator, no matter what department they worked in, in the building. Um, they could come in from that upper level at the customer area, but there would also be flat areas outside of the service department there that would be still accessible, even if they're not marked with handicap.
Yeah, it's, it's more about the, making sure they have an accessible route to get from wherever they can park. So they're not, you know, if somebody breaks their leg and is in a wheelchair, they're not wheeling themselves up an eight percent slope every day to try to get.
I, I agree, there's plenty of spaces on that lower side where the service department is, I think that would give them an accessible route that would be to the elevator and be able to get to anywhere in the building on the lower level or the upper level from there.
Correct, fair enough.
Hey, John, I have one, I have one quick question, um. I, I was going back and forth, but I still need to ask it. Um, and it was about waiver four, about eliminating, I, I think there were, there was, there would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jones, um, fifteen bicycle spaces, but you wanna reduce that to four. And with the motorcycle and scooter spaces, you wanna go from, and I, I, I figured it, if I'm wrong, please let me know that it would be twelve point three spaces down to none. And you said you don't anticipate, motorcycle or scooters, you know, being driven to this, to the dealership. So, so give me, just give me your thought process to, on that a bit, if you can.
Um, this site is operated as a auto dealership for, for many, many years. Uh, Jason, how long is the, uh, have you opened up, why are you hanging at the site?
Um, nineteen seventy-seven, I think.
Right, so just based upon, uh, that historical reference, uh, there has not been a demonstrated need uh, for a significant amount of, of motorcycle parking on the site. Um, and there's, uh, a large number of parking spaces that are provided. And so the thought was, uh, is that if you did have an individual in a motorcycle who arrived onsite, then maybe standard spaces would be available then for them to park in. Um, as far as the bicycle parking spaces, as I mentioned, the requirement, uh, that you're correct, it would be fifteen bicycle parking spaces would be required, is a function of the total number of parking spaces required for the site. And so, uh, what, what I did instead was to look at just quantum, adding up our total number of employee and vehicle parking spaces. And then applying the bicycle parking rate to those number of parking spaces, uh, since obviously we're not gonna have people biking if, if, uh, associated with a, with a storage space for, for a vehicle for sale. Okay. And so based upon that, uh, it would be four bike parking spaces, which we are providing with new bike racks, uh, in the front of the site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? No, I wanna wrap up with a couple on my back, back way out here. So you're proposing, in the grand scheme of things, you're proposing a third dealership on a, on a, on a, on a parcel that has two dealerships right now. So effectively you will, you will increase customer traffic hopefully by fifty percent. And you will increase inventory demand hopefully by fifty percent. What is, in practical terms though, do you have that capacity on the site to do both of those things? Because you're taking away parking, so, you know, whatever inventory you have there now is gonna have to be cut back. I'm sort of, I'm getting into the big picture, the big bubble here about what? Is, is there something about managing offsite inventory, something about managing how you, how you cycle inventory onsite? What, what exactly is the shift in, in how this is gonna work? Where you currently have two dealerships and you're gonna put three in the same space, actually in less space, because you're taking away some of that parking?
So yes, we feel that based on the parking we provided, that we'll be able to fit the cars we need to. And we, uh, obviously the inventory situation is, is extraordinarily lean and we feel will continue to be. But, uh, there are plans for offsite parking if needed, uh, but we feel that the parking provided should be sufficient for operating the three stores.
So are you saying that now you've got a surplus of storage and parking area for the two dealerships that are there?
Yes.
Significant surplus?
Yes.
Okay, how did you end up that way? Like, how did it end up getting built that way and being, being so oversized?
Uh, th- those decisions were made a long time ago, but, uh, it's a nine acre lot for two dealerships. Uh, the, the requirements for the manufacturers, if I recall, are somewhere on one point six or two acres per store. Um, so even with the third store, we have sufficient space to meet all our manufacturers' needs on the site.
Okay.
Now, if I may, if I may as well, the, 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 the building holds a lot of cars, um, for the service vehicles as well. So there, there's a lot of building area, uh, as soon as the cars are brought in the morning, they go directly into stalls. So the building, the building itself, the entire footprint, the lower level is, is parking by nature of its function.
Okay, that's fair, at least for the service cars, yeah. Are you guys, on another topic, are you guys still parking display cars on the grassy area between your park, the parking and sidewalk?
No.
You've been doing that for years, I don't know if the city's gotten after you about that, or the state, actually, it's not, it's right away, actually. Are you still doing that?
No, there are no cars parked on the green space right now.
Well, not today, but as a practice, do you still do that?
No, sir.
But why not? Was that something that was shut down or, cause you've been doing it for years? I mean, I, I've been going by there forever and it's been a, a thing.
I don't recall exactly why or what changed exactly when, but I know that we haven't been practicing that for a period of time now.
Okay, because that, that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be central to the discussion about whether you get credit for the perimeter landscape or not. Cause parking cars on that green space, um, that, that's not gonna fly. If that's really gonna be something we wanna, we wanna entertain as, as part of the, um, the green space calculation. And in fact, we probably ought to have a discussion about whether the condition of that green space that for all these years of having those display cars on there is, is appropriate. Maybe that's something the landscape architect can comment on, you know, whether compaction and, um, you know, erosion, things like that. Or if the, the condition of those areas are, are actually adequate and shouldn't be part of this plan somehow to, to, to restore the, the green space. But we can have that later. Um, and the final question I wanna get into is, is there going to be a scheme for, um, signage to, are, are you gonna gang all three together on, on some of the same time polls you've got now? Or are you gonna create a third, a third presence in terms of, um, street signage, site signage?
As far as site signage, I know we're gonna have to update our signage and there'll be a lot of asphalt or street directional signs, uh, throughout the site to make sure customers know where to go. Uh, I'm not sure, Ken, I don't, do you have any, uh, specifics to share?
Uh, we, we do have a new sign location, uh, proposed at this time. Um, and if there were any modifications to the existing signage, obviously we'd have to go through the city's permit process, uh, to do that. But that's, that, the sign modifications are not part of our, our site plan amendment package.
But, but the big idea is that you're gonna use the existing, um, whether they're pylons or I guess call them pylon, for lack of a better term, pylon signs, you'll just gang a third, a third brand on that as opposed to creating another, another pylon or monument somewhere on the site.
Um, if I may, I, a lot of times that's, the manufacturer have certain requirements for that for each brand. And then they have to fit that within the limits of the sign ordinance. So I, I would say that, although that's maybe not a real answer, that's a, they would kind of figure that out within the limits of the code for what they would do in terms of meeting the manufacturer's requirements as well as.
All right, very good, all right, great.
I have, I have one quick. Uh, the, uh, auto industry is going through a trend, this transition right now for the next four to ten years, it's gonna go EV. I believe you mentioned the fact that there's gonna be one or two EV sites, charging sites on the lot. Uh, do you have anticipation for a level two or level three additions for that? And if so, how many spots would that take out? Because when you put in an EV, it's gonna be, you've got the monument and the, uh, the actual charging element that takes up almost the entire space. So can you clarify that, please?
Yep, I, I can give you the best answer I can give you, I just had this conversation with my electrical engineer today, uh, who does a lot of all the dealerships, so does my firm. It's a pretty big issue for all these dealerships to get level two and level three. It means an entire new electrical service to every building. I don't know if anybody realizes that or not yet. So every single building that's out there to bring in multiple chargers needs a service increase to the building. We're, we're planning that now, there will be level two and level three here. The quantity of them is still, we understand that it's a big deal for the future coming. Uh, I'm not sure anybody really knows how we're gonna handle that. I don't mean at this dealership, I mean everywhere.
Sure, sure, I just wanna bring that subject up because it is gonna be critical to any, any dealership coming in. And we've gotta anticipate all that, not just from a, not just from a sales perspective, but from a land use perspective as well.
And not from the minimal standard that they're asking for now, but what they're gonna actually need in five years or ten years as well to, if we're doing an upgrade for the service, we don't wanna be doing that again in, for three years.
Right, and Kia and Volkswagen, I know that Buick at this point, but I know Kia and Volkswagen are deep into the EVs. And that's, that's really gonna be a change in the, in the way things go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, the good news, there's a lot of primary power running up three fifty-five, so it's, it, it's nearby if they ever need it. Um, all right, great, any other questions, uh, from the commissioners? If not, I wanna offer, um, for the public to comment, and, um, Chris, if you'd play the, um, intro, please.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Hey, great, thanks. Um, and I just see just a, just a three or four here on the three, I guess, actually attending, um, from the public. And it looks like two of them might actually be related to the applicant's team. So, um, I'll keep an eye on that, if anybody does wanna raise their hand and comment, I'm, we'll certainly recognize you. But in the meantime, let's go ahead to, um, Jasmine, if we could go to the staff recommendation, please.
Okay, staff recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP dash nine one zero seven dash twenty twenty-one, EMV dash nine one seven six dash twenty twenty-two and parking waivers. I find it in conformance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with one condition.
Great, thank you. Uh, anybody have any questions about the recommendation? We can move into discussion if, if not, okay. So let me, let me just set up a couple of issues that I wanna make sure we cover. Um, when, when it comes to the parking waivers, whether it's drive aisles or counts or, or, and anything related to parking, to the extent it falls under the umbrella of, of, um, inventory, and I don't wanna be flip about this, but if it's inventory, the, the, the world of car dealerships is, is so on their own, in their own world as far as what that means. Because inventory, it's like big shelves for anybody else, for any other retail. So it, it happens to look like a big parking lot, but the reality is it doesn't behave like one. It's a, it's a place to store inventory. So how they choose to manage it and how they choose to move their cars in and out of it is is really their their. Their expertise. To the extent that it affects. Public access and ease of navigating the site, I do care about it. And it looks like in this case. That remains still within our standards or or accommodating to the to the average person. I am a little concerned about. The relative proximity of the accessible parking and and I think Phil, you were bringing up how how they might navigate the site kind of in practical terms, but. We can we can give some clarification on that. I assume at this point. Both the architect's team and the city have reviewed accessibility requirements against what's proposed and it's within the it's within the. Parameters of what's required, even if it's not necessarily. Generous, it it still fits with the requirements. My second big topic is on the green space question, and. I know we've done this before. We've talked about. Large parking fields, especially with car dealerships and and the concept of counting. Perimeter landscaping, especially in in the in the realm of. Again, inventory storage, we're putting a tree island in the middle of a big field of inventory. While environmentally appropriate and and for all the reasons we ask for green space would be appropriate. Is in terms of the actual operation of the car dealership, probably not appropriate. So it there's a little bit of a conflict there. So taking and taking that kind of at least for the moment, falling on the side of the of the dealership operation and and giving credit for the perimeter. The one thing I will say is, and I want to be very clear about this, is that whatever practices there have been in the past for displaying cars on the on the the landscape buffers between the parking. The edge of the parking lots. And and wherever the right of way is, and I'm not sure exactly where it falls, but certainly between the curb and the of the parking lot and the sidewalk. That's got to stop and it can't ever happen again, especially if we're going to really seriously consider this green space. And and is and again, one step further, and I meant to check this today. That the condition of that green space is in fact as green space and not. Not eroded, not compacted, not leftover from when there used to be cars being displayed there, that it really truly presents a green buffer between. The street and the and the rest of the property or the rest of the the operation. I recognize there are monument signs, there there are power poles or all kinds of things interrupt that, but to the extent that there's any damage or any. Any wear and tear due to the fact that it was used as a display space. That's going to have to be restored, I think, is part of our our moving forward on this. And I don't know what that means in terms of, and and I think what we'd have to do is defer to staff to work with the applicant's team and the expertise of the applicant's team. To assess what that really is. But right now I'm going on sort of a layman's general impression, which is knowing that cars were parked there for years, it can't be in great shape. And and interestingly enough, a lot of the existing. Online photos through through Google Earth show a lot of. Erosion and and evidence of when that was used for that purpose. Even though those pictures or those images may be a couple of years old, that's still recent enough that that it's likely there's damage or there's 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 restoration work to be done. So. I want to leave that on the table as an issue. And the 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 last one is actually a positive note. Gosh, it's great to see. Expansion of 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 the offerings up here. Happy to hear that. King is moving up here with with the dealership that they're losing down south and not taking it, you know, to Frederick or taking it somewhere else entirely, but. But keeping it within the community, I think that's fantastic. So I applaud you for doing that. And I and I also really appreciate that. The scale of this, it doesn't need to be a mega store. It's it's a relatively compact and can leverage. An existing site where there's there's a large field of parking, there's some service, but it does all the right things. It's sort of the smart growth version of. Of car dealership expansion. Now, it's it's taking advantage of of some basic infrastructure and basic. Basic capacity that's already there. So so good job with that. So what I'm picking on are some of the details. My big idea here is that I think it seems to work pretty well and it's certainly compatible with the with the context of what's going on up in this this portion of Frederick Avenue. So. That's that's my general comments. Commissioners, please jump in.
Yeah, I think, John, I would I would agree with everything you said. I mean, I. Probably my biggest hang up in this whole thing is the green area discussion, understanding the previous. Waivers. You know, twenty, almost twenty years ago, you know. Prior to all of our current environmental standards and stormwater standards. You know, appreciate the realities of a car dealership being different than, you know, a shopping mall or or a restaurant or any other sort of. Typical parking lot design. But the reality is, you know, even if we were to adhere to the previous waivers and the previous design, you are taking out. A large chunk of the existing, you know. Interior green area to facilitate the building. You know. I I. I'm sort of I'm sort of caught here because I'm sympathetic to the I'm sympathetic to the reality of not wanting to, you know, lose parking spaces. It's, you know. It would be an impact space to provide that green area you're taking out elsewhere. You know, I if I'm being honest, I'm a little disappointed. We're not seeing, you know, some some. More progressive responses, things like green roofs on top of buildings that, you know, could do a lot for stormwater and and. You know, from my perspective, mitigate the trade offs of having a massive sea of asphalt. Again, it's unfortunately not yet a code requirement, hopefully it will be at some point, but. You know, that that sort of thing is out there and it's it's. Comparatively easy thing. That I would have liked to see. You and frankly, other facilities like this in the city. Take advantage of instead of shooting for for sort of the the lowest common denominator of of building technology here. That that said, I think I agree with with John, you know, the the logic of of supporting this perimeter space in lieu of, you know, tree islands. Makes sense. Interesting to note that most of that green space is actually outside your property line, especially along Frederick Avenue. So I think I think the point about. A, making sure we are no longer parking cars there and, you know, restoring and repairing the damage to that compacted soil and the grass and the, you know. Plantings that are out there so that it actually functions like. Water absorbing soil and not just like more blacktop, I think, is the key. So, you know, I. I'll I'll. I'll swallow my objections here and and be 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 as pragmatic as possible and and. You know, su- support the green waiver on this, but. It's. This this one for me is is right on the edge where, you know, the discussion about. Understanding that something was. Accepted or waived twenty years ago doesn't necessarily mean it's current best practice and doesn't necessarily mean it's currently in the best interest of the city. And and if this was a function other than a car dealership, I would be much more inclined to say. Not a chance.
John, can we put in a condition regarding the perimeter? Grass, green grass area so that cars are not parked. On that green grass?
Yeah, for me, it's a two part condition. The first is that it's a formal and and, you know, overt restriction. But also something about working with staff to be sure the condition that's left is is restored to the appropriate. And and as I'm saying, I'm sort of deferring to staff and and. Probably the landscape architect on this on the on the team here to to put the right language or the right. Framework around it that has to do with whether it's compaction or erosion or whatever those things are.
Just maintenance, just basic green maintenance.
Well, I think it's beyond it's beyond that. It's.
Yeah.
Cars there, it's. Eration, it's digging up the soil, it's loosening it, it's putting in, you know, fresh whatever, you know, planting so that it's A alive and B, it actually absorbs water like it's supposed to.
Right. And that's a that's a measurement or that's a practice that that staff can can address in detail or at more technical level. And I think so for me, Lloyd, you answered your question. I agree with you. The condition has to do with, it would be a two part restricted future parking and display car displays there. And and provide restoration to the green space, you know. And Jasmine, I I'm going to. Rely on you to putting that into the language that's appropriate for the actual motion at some point, please. Yeah, Danny, please.
I just have, um, um, okay, good. A quick question, Jasmine, and and I guess maybe Frank. Your recommendation just says parking waivers. Do we have to take each of those? I know it's six. But do we have to take each one at a time? Or is it okay to just bundle them into the word parking waivers?
I can refer to Frank, but in past, we've just put all parking waivers just in one.
Just one? Okay, all right.
As long as the parking waivers are separate from the other approvals. They can be combined.
Okay, so we just have to take that by itself, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want the parking waiver first or after the site plan approval?
After.
Okay.
It makes sense.
Or a separate motion for the parking waivers?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Sharon, anything you want to add to the? Thumbs up, thumbs down discussion?
No, I would echo everything that you said is spot on. I think it's a great use of site. Building and keeping the dealership here. And the green space issue is obviously a concern. So I am in complete agreement with your previous thoughts.
All right.
Right. And I I just want to, I just wanted to also echo, you know, the fact that. That, you know, they had plenty of opportunities to move to another site and and it is wonderful that it is going to be in Gatensburg. When I heard that. That property was for sale, I was like, oh, no, are we going to lose the dealership? And I'm glad that it's going to be. In close proximity to where it was and and we'll still have the opportunity to shop. GM dealership.
Yeah, I think the old king is actually Rockville, right?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm I'm happy to hear that it's not going too far.
Yeah. Coming here. Good. All right, any other comments or issues? I think we have concurrence that the. Let me just re recap this a little bit for the commissioners. You all are comfortable with the parking waivers? Yes, no, no concerns, sir. Okay. Percentage of green space, which is actually rolled into Jasmine, that's just really rolled into the site plan, right?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The green space issue is just rolled into the site plan. There's no separate. Separate consideration for that.
It's all within the site plan.
Okay. And so now I'd like to revisit the additional condition that we were kicking around. Do you have something? We can at least use for the record if it needs to be tweaked later, that's okay.
What I have is applicant to remove all cars from the green space area. And maintain that area as green space. Or. Also, or bring it back to its existing.
I think we're looking for two separate conditions. So what I have is actually the applicant to work with staff to review. And if necessary, restore and repair all lawn panel on public streets prior to issuance of a site development permit.
Okay, that's good. That's a good one.
Yeah.
That that I like that one. And the other one really should be that. Not only they remove it, but there is there is to be no more parking on the green space moving forward.
Right.
So it's a flat out restriction on the site plan moving forwards.
You've got three conditions then.
I think the property owner is not permitted to store and or park any cars on any green space.
Correct. So we've got the one condition that you've already got in the recommended approval. And then these two additional ones, right?
Yep.
Okay. Do you all feel like the record's clear enough? We can just reference it in the motion? Okay. All right, very good. All right, any other concerns, questions? Applicants team, I'll I'll give you one kind of open opening here. We've added two conditions to the. To the approval. Do you have any concerns with those?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that is okay, but let me ask Jason, because I know he's here with us. Jason, did you hear those conditions and are those acceptable to you?
Yeah. Yeah, we're good with those. And the only thing I'd main mention is that we did do some seasonal landscaping through the fall and that area after it was landscaped and I think seeded and. Arieded just along with the rest of the property in the fall landscaping that was done.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks all. All right, then I think we're ready for a motion. First up is the site plan.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission based on the exhibit submitted applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant AFP nine one oh seven twenty twenty one. Finding in conformance with section twenty four dash one seventy and twenty four dash one seventy two A of the city code with the three conditions.
Just let me clarify the motion. Do you need the environmental application with that, but we'll do the parking waiver separately?
Right.
That 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 was a question. I didn't know if the environmental and the parking were tied together.
The environmental is related to the forest conservation plan, so that is tied to the site plan that I we've done that in the past as one motion.
Then I'll amend my motion to include EMV nine one seven six dash twenty twenty two along with. AFP nine one oh seven dash twenty twenty one recommended for approval.
Okay.
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins. Oh, I'm sorry. Get my head out of my script here. Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Commissioner Winborn.
Hi.
Commissioner Kentrell.
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. Next up would be motion for that passage unanimously. Next up would be the motion for the parking waivers.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission based on the exhibit submitted applicant's testimony, the staff report finding and recommendation. Grant the six parking waivers associated with AFP nine one oh seven dash twenty twenty one as presented.
Second.
Removed and seconded, seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
Commissioner Winborn.
I.
Commissioner Kentrell.
Hi.
And I would I as well. That passes unanimously. All right, thank you all very much. Good luck. Looking forward to the.
Thank you.
The new new level of service and business in the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, 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 great addition to the city.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move then to, well, we're we're moving to from the commissioner. Regulatory agenda is over with. So Sharon, anything tonight?
Uh, no, not for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Lloyd, anything tonight?
Nothing.
No, Danny?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Phil, anything tonight?
Nothing. Overly specific. I think the one thing this this tonight's application brought up a recurring. A recurring thought and, you know, hope is that. You know, as we continue to look at, you know. Continuing to update our environmental requirements, our green codes. There are things that are commonplace requirements in other jurisdictions, such as green roofs. That if if, not that anyone could ever afford to do it, but if. This application before us tonight was for a car dealership in downtown DC. A green roof would be an absolute requirement to even be considered. And. There are, there are things like that that are. Ten years ago, we're reaching for the stars, which are now. Commonplace low bar baseline green. Green features. That I feel like we almost never see because they're optional. And as long as they're optional. They, no one's ever going to spend the extra ten dollars a square foot on a roof to add green roof. No one's ever going to do that. And so. I would just encourage us and encourage the city to, you know, be selective because it's it's a fine line between. Being progressive and and requiring these sort of. Evolving levels of performance and, you know, being overly burdensome. But I think there is a lot out there in the marketplace that has become much. More affordable and much more commonplace that that is in in reach and reasonable for us to make a requirement.
Yeah, I agree. And I and I think it probably takes on the form of a of some. A framework where more than one solution could could solve it. So, for example, we could get into the coverage question. Where green roofs might solve it, but so too might be structured parking for for inventory instead like. Like the next door neighbors did and and, you know, as opposed to covering everything that surface, you might end up at two or three levels of structure. To leave some of the air, some of the site undeveloped.
And and cover the top of it with an acre of PVs like the guys next door did. And so like. You know, it's.
Yeah.
As long as the lowest common denominator is acceptable, that's all we're going to get.
That's fair. And actually, I I wonder if. I'm sort of thinking out loud here, Greg, maybe you can you can comment on this. Does something like this spin up from some recommendations from the Environmental Affairs Committee? Does it spin up from our? You know, staff working through some of the the regulation regulatory side? What what do you think something like that might be? Where do you park an issue like that? So it gets a little bit of traction at some point?
Well, as you remember, I think John Schlichting. Formed you all recently that we are going to look to do a rewrite, hopefully in the near term of the zoning ordinance. So that is definitely something that could potentially be living in the zoning ordinance related to. Maybe some greens green requirements. We do have a green building code as well, obviously. So applicants are required to meet those standards through the building permit process. But it doesn't necessarily require, as as Commissioner Wessel will probably say. A green roof like these zoning ordinance requires.
Yeah, I I think it's. The only concern with a zoning ordinance is it's it's harder and more cumbersome to update as things evolve, like green technology and and sustainable building practices. Are a constantly moving target. And so. To the extent that things can live in either a stormwater management code or a or a green code that are. Easier to update more frequently than a zoning ordinance. easier to update more frequently than a zoning ordinance, this sort of thing belongs in, right? Like the zoning ordinance is what says, you know, you shall comply with these following codes or these following standards, but we need to make sure that those standards are easily and frequently updatable is my only concern.
I mean, let me, um, take it back to the staff. We can obviously put our heads together internally and then I can try to come back maybe the next couple of meetings with some updates, maybe with some ways we can move forward with these suggestions.
And the only thing to ask is, don't limit it to what happened tonight. I mean, it's, it's a broader topic about strategies that go beyond kind of the conventional and, and do more to put some, put some some force behind getting those, those solutions.
Yep.
And even what Lloyd was saying about the charging stations, you know, that was a good point. You know, if we're trying to be progressive in the city and not that you can require them, but again, encouraging them is tricky, but I think you're right. I think it's needed. I think the time is now.
That's, I agree. And we That's a good point, Sharon. That was a very good point. And Lloyd, very good point. That's the future.
And we do encourage many times these type of, again, charging stations, things like that, right? But again, short of the code requiring it, there's, it's tough sometimes for staff to, to get those implemented.
Well, even like what Phil was saying, not just a green earth, but even like solar and stuff. I mean, I just feel like we're moving, we're moving in that direction and I, no, I don't know how you encourage it.
It would be interesting to, to sort of canvas and survey other jurisdictions because there are the, the bigger cities and the bigger jurisdictions have different, you know, different approaches all over the place, whether it's a, whether it's a, you know, points for different strategies or bonuses for doing different things on top of, you know, some western baseline requirements. There's a bunch of different ways to structure incentives and requirements that don't resolve in a one size fits all approach, but give, give developers and, you know, anybody building a, a sort of a menu of options that you can mix and match as appropriate to hit a certain goal.
Right.
That is true.
Or whether it's green or whether it's, I mean, maybe it's just incentives and reduction fees or something like that. You, you could tie the two together.
Well, I think also we've got one other feather in our cap and that is NIST is in the center of our entire city. And NIST is at the forefront of a lot of this stuff. And I think we should tie that little, not, not that we should tie it into our regs, but the fact is this is a city that revolves around technology.
And we should We should be enlightened, we, we should be more enlightened, shouldn't we?
Exactly.
They've got that smart house, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Anyway.
All right. All good discussion. But yeah, I mean, I think the, the upshot is Greg, we've got to get that big idea into somebody, onto somebody's list soon. And then how it shakes out in terms of all of the, the potential strategies. I, I don't know who would have, could own that, but let's, let's get it on their list too.
Okay.
I, I told John, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to volunteer some, some pro bono services to, to help with that effort. Just let me know.
Excellent. All right. Anything else? Greg, what do we got coming up?
Couple of joint public hearings on your agenda next Monday, February 7th is the historic preservation tax amendments. And then February 22nd is the other joint public hearing for this month, and that is on the sketch plan for the Metropolitan Grove area that's adjacent to the Park, Parklands subdivision. And then reminder, our next planning meeting is February 16th.
Is the Parklands piece coming back as the town center still, or is it a change?
It's a combination of the two. It includes portion of the area that's the town center under the original approvals, as well as the Stevenson property and the property south of that, which were never part of an original sketch plan.
Right, right, right. Good, good. All right. Excellent. Frank, thanks for being with us. Anything to add tonight?
No, nothing more to add. I, I would say I, I believe King Pontiac started out in Gaithersburg, so it kind of seems like it's coming back.
Coming back.
I think it did. Started.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, I think you're right too. All right, guys.
Pontiac doesn't exist anymore, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
All right, all, if there's nothing else.
John?
Yeah.
Could you give me a call?
You're talking to me?
Yes, yes.
I'd be happy to. All right. All right, all have a good night.
All right.